I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, September 27, 2022, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy, and Alderman Karen will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call. Would the clerk please call and roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Cleed. Alderman Moran.
Present.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Juddy.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Como.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Wilshire. Fourteen present, one absent.
Thank you. Also present this evening is Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President, thank you. Well, I had a few things I wanted to discuss with you. The first is Resolution R-22062, having to do with the tax rate. This resolution proposes that $4 million of the fund balance be dedicated to reduce the tax rate. This is an important step for the taxpayers of Nashua. We discussed this with the Budget Committee last night, and they unanimously endorsed this resolution. But we also discussed a number of other issues pertaining to the city's finances, particularly the importance of the fund, the total fund balance, and growing the fund balance every year. The importance of that with respect to the city's AAA bond rating from both Fitch and Standard &amp; Poor's. This is a rare distinction, as CFO Griffin describes it, and it does affect the rate of interest that the city pays on any debt that we incur. And just to illustrate the kind of effect that interest really has, if, for example, and we've been borrowing at very low, very preferred rates, if, for example, on the school project, which we are embarking on, the interest rate on that debt went up 1%, that would be more than $1 million a year in interest increase as a result of the 1% additional interest rate, and that would go on for 20 years. So the ability to borrow money at preferred lower rates is very important in terms of the overall budgeting of the city. And I'm sure you will get to that in the agenda. Another item I wanted to mention, Madam President, is the fact that Administrative Services Director Kim Kleiner has given her resignation, and I informed you of that by email. She will be undertaking very soon another professional opportunity. I think she's, leaves with mixed feelings, but in terms of her advancement of her career in government, this is an important step. Of course, I and many of you have worked closely with Ms. Kleiner during the course of her six and a half years or so of city service, especially as Administrative Services Director. In that position, and I will miss her, and I think some of you will as well, in that position, she accomplished many things, many important things, for the citizens, taxpayers of Nashua. The first thing that comes to my mind is that she helped and led the initiative to reform the city's HMO plan, to help reduce city costs. This then was implemented and agreed to for 10 employee unions, 10 employee groups, and it is resulting right now in a savings of $3.9 million per year. That will, of course, continue into the future, but $3.9 million a year is a lot of money. She helped conduct Nashua's first dependent verification audit. This determines whether people who are actually on the insurance plan are eligible. That resulted in $462,000 in savings. Many other things, but I will mention she did a lot in the assessing area, upgraded the KAMA system, implemented the DocuWare software, and of course, on another front, oversaw all of the city hall improvements, the COVID-related improvements paid for by federal dollars, which were made throughout the building in order to make us more COVID and any other pandemic resistance. So there are many other things I could talk about, but I think we will be missing Ms. Kleiner. I have asked Tim Cummings, the Economic Development Director, to take her position on an interim basis, and I intend to appoint him as a permanent nominee, a nominee for a permanent position there, and I expect that I will have that nomination to you at the next meeting. I also wanted to mention another employee who has done an incredible job in helping save the city's money, and that is Doria Brown, Energy Manager. We have embarked on, I think, very smart management of our energy purchases and supply. Doria Brown was able to negotiate a contract that enables the city to purchase electricity for many of our accounts at 5.9 cents per kilowatt. Now, this goes on until the end of 2024. We could get a complete analysis because the city has, it's complicated because the city has many different accounts and different meters for various buildings and sometimes more than meter, more than one meter in a single building, but in the wastewater treatment plant alone, the difference between the 5.9 cents and now ever sources 22 cents a kilowatt represents a savings of over $1 million per year. In the library, the difference between the 5.9, and these are all on the 5 point, these are all part of this contract. Not every city meter is on this one contract. At the library, the 5.9 cents a kilowatt saves about $150,000 a year for our streetlights. The savings are, which is on the 5.9 cent contract, about $1 million a year. For DPW, about $200,000 a year, and there are other accounts that are on that same rate. We could, we could, it would take some work, but we could look through every account and figure out the savings, but just those four alone, we're talking about, you know, $2.4 million a year as a result of Ms. Brown's work. So I want to thank her and remind you that you have many city employees who are working very hard to, doing a very good job to try to help the citizens, the residents, the taxpayers of Nashua. I did want to mention two items that are in the escrows, that we discussed kind of an overview of those, and we will have a public hearing on that on October 6. But these have to do with community security. First of all, the Police Department believes that they need two more police officers, and Chief Rourke and I have discussed that at various times, and because of the strong arguments that he's made and the safety that's paramount and the fact that they have such a good record to begin with, I have put in the escrows two police officers to begin as soon as they can hire them, and he, I'm sure, will be here, the chief will be here, to discuss that at the time of the escrow public hearing. Another community security issue that needs to be addressed, I believe, is the fact that we did not budget an emergency management director in the hopes of saving $100,000. But, and we have kind of an assistant position that we upgraded a little bit. But Chief Buxton, who is here, I see, in the audience, from the Fire Department, as well as Chief Rourke from the Police Department, and Public Health Director, Public Health and Community Services Director Bobby Bagley, have made the argument that, look, you know, times being what they are, and we see what's happened around the country, we really need, we have public events, we really need a community emergency management director. So we have rewritten the, upgraded or updated the job description. Justin Cates, formerly Emergency Management Director, has helped with that, and that job is being posted, but there is money for that in the escrows as well. So those we can discuss in more detail at the time of the public hearing. Finally, I would like to mention that Harbor Care had their 17th Veterans Stand Down the other day, last week, to honor the cities and the community veterans. I want to thank them for the great job that they did. You may be aware that with Harbor Care, Harbor Homes leading the effort, and at the time Governor Hassan was very involved, Nashua was certified by the VA as a, as functional zero vet for veterans homelessness, and that has been renewed every year. That means any veteran who's homeless, who comes to the city and seeks a place to stay and does get one. So I want to congratulate Harbor Homes on that effort and everything that they're doing for our veterans. And I think that's all I have, Madam President.
Mayor, response to your remarks, Mayor. Alderman, I'll start with Alderman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. It's sad to hear that Kim Kleiner is leaving us. She was not only instrumental in the things that the mayor just said, but she's also was instrumental in a lot of other things, like the opening of the Arlington Street Community Center, as well as NCC RJ's Nashua Community Conversation Week, and justice. My brother's keeper, she was a community leader. She helped with getting food for the city, clothing for the city. She was a hard worker. Sometime I just shake my head about all the things that she actually did for this city and for our community. So not only did she work for the city, she worked in the city, and that's a lot to say about Kim Kleiner, and I'm really sad to see her go. I tried to talk her out of it, but it didn't work, because we would never get another Kim Kleiner, and I'm glad Tim's stepping. It's going to be hard to step in her shoes, but she was just fantastic. That's what I have to say about her.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I also want to echo Alderwoman Timmons' words and the mayor's words. You know, I think Kim, Dr. Kleiner sometimes gets a raw deal around here, but I think she does a tremendous job with the city. And, you know, one of the other things she did, she got us off the paperless for insurance and started to get that all done electronically, which also was some form of savings. She's done a ton of work, and it hasn't been easy over the last couple of years to do that. COVID, you know, hit, and it is going to be tough to see her go. I think Director Cummings is a great candidate for that role, and I think if he gets appointed, he'll do an excellent job. So thank you.
No one else on this side? No one else? Okay. Reading, recognition period.
None.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I will declare the minutes of the Special Board of Aldermen Meeting of June 21, 2022, be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
None.
Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. I have two people signed up. Matthew Guthro.
Matthew Guthro, 104 Fond Lane. On the docket tonight, you're asked to bond $2 million for school safety improvements. Over the past few months, I've been all around the city advocating for safer schools, but instead of clear, transparent programs and plans for improvement, the taxpayers are asked for a vague, blank check for $2 million for school safety improvements. All of this comes as the endorser of this resolution, responding to my request for additional school resource officers just a few months ago in this very chamber with, "We have the safest schools in New Hampshire." That sounds like a lot like political brusler. So I ask you, which is it? Are we safe? Is there a plan? Can we provide a clear explanation to the stakeholders here in Nashua, the need to bond $2 million for this project? Switching gears, I would just like to put in support for, I think the item here is R-22064, the purchase of a new Arrow XT pumper truck for the Fire Department. I had an opportunity recently to sit down with Chief Buxton. I want to thank Alderman Sullivan for your help in coordinating that meeting, and I want to let you know that we are this close to becoming a Class I fire organization here in Nashua. An ISO Class I rating is a true rarity, a fraction of the top 1% of all fire departments nationwide. Now it's about, it's not just about the sticker that we put on the truck. This designation also contributes to the reduction in commercial and residential property insurance rates. I know Tim Cummings has asked you over the year to spend millions of dollars in the name of economic development, but I ask you.
One minute.
What is a better mechanism for attracting new businesses and retaining existing businesses here in Nashua than having some of the lowest commercial property insurance rates in the state? In conclusion, there are many factors, not just equipment, that play a role in this designation, and I ask you not only to approve this resolution, but I encourage each and every one of you to work together with Chief Buxton so that we can achieve this prestigious designation as quickly and efficiently as possible. We already have the nationally accredited Police Department here in our great city, and we have to have the opportunity to make Nashua Fire Rescue the only ISO Class I rated fire department in the state of New Hampshire. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Ordolano.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I want to address R-062, establishing the fund balance for reducing the tax rate. I went to the budget meeting last night and had a chance to hear about this. I would hope that this receives full support from the board. It will help lower the tax rate about 29 cents, and I want to talk to you about how high our tax rate is and how important it is to take this reduction and consider trying to do more this year as you build your budget and you look at your spending. Our tax rate is a good bit higher than I thought it would be. Our homes went up about 40%, maybe a little bit higher on average. Our tax rate is coming down about 20%, 21%. So we're asking many property owners, residential property owners, to pick up the tab with property tax increases. It's going to be pretty significant. I looked last night, and the average ranch in 2018 was 265 when KRT came through, and at this rate currently, 23, 22, that's about a $6,100 tax bill. And if you look at the average ranch now, that same ranch is $380,000, and you multiply it by a tax rate of 1830, the mayor thought it would fall between 1830 and 1850, you're at about $7,000. You're going up about 850, 900 bucks. That's a lot of money on a 900-square-foot ranch, and I can tell you, I look in my neighborhood where they had to address the depreciation issue in the older neighborhoods, that wasn't quite right, and there are some small homes going up almost two grand. There's a street with eight houses on it, that's all over the map. So we're going to see a lot of hardship. I think this 29 cents is far too little. I think that you're going to be addressing a new business, a whole lot of bonding for 32 or 34 million dollars, and I think this board ought to think long and hard about how much money you're going to continue to spend on this city. And I'd like to address Alderman O'Brien, because I know you've done a lot of work up at the state with the pension fund, but I think you're not doing enough work down here to vote no on things, because you can't change what's up there at the state with 500 people, and you can't count on it. So I think your fiscal conservatism is missing down here in Nashua.
Communications requiring final approval.
I'd like to make a motion to place on file and approve the final design phase of the Riverfront Project with VHB Inc. in an amount not to exceed $445,400. Funding will be through the account created to implement the Downtown Riverfront Project.
We need to let the clerk read the communication first.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Communication has been received from Tim Cummings, Economic Development Director, regarding communication approval and place-on-file a contract for professional services related to the Nashua Downtown Riverfront Implementation Project for VHB Inc.
So we've heard the motion. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Say. Motion carries. Petitions.
None.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Zoning Board of Adjustment, Joshua Niehaly, new alternate appointment, term to expire October 1, 2025, Ten Roderick Circle, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03062.
There being no objection, I will accept the appointment by the mayor as read and refer it to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I will declare the report of the September 19, 2022 Human Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for the oral report of the Budget Review Committee meeting held last night regarding proposed Resolution Alderman Dowd.
Yes, since I wasn't able to chair the meeting last night due to an illness, I'd ask Alderman O'Brien if he would give the oral report, and I will take care of the motion later.
Very good. Thank you, Alderman Dowd. Last night, we did hear the Resolution R-22-062. There was discussion on it, but I think the majority vote with no nays came out in support of contributing the $4,000, excuse me, $4 million back into the tax roll. It is something, somebody could probably say, you know, it's miniscule or pennies or whatever, but it is something that is going to, you know, come back to the taxpayers. This is, it's practical, it's what we need to do, so therefore received a very good reply. So the recommendation of the Budget Committee is for final passage of this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
None.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of R-22-059, amending the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2022 Relative to the Community Development Block Rent, CDVG.
Alderman Lopez.
Yep, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-22059.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 2259 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-22-061, approving a proposed cable television franchise agreement renewal between the City of Nashua and Comcast.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I would move for final passage of R-2261.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I support this, and I'm going to vote for it, but I did have a constituent that reached out to me today and wanted to know why we don't think of Comcast as a monopoly and why no one else ever tries to put in a bid for them. And again, I don't, you know, it's not a question anybody can answer, but I definitely wanted to put it out there because, you know, she was, she was pretty upset, and she thinks that we as aldermen and alderwomen don't really care about changing the contract, and I wanted to at least put that out there. I mean, it does seem like it's a monopoly, but I guess if no one, no other company bids on it, I guess we have nothing to put it against each other, I guess, but I just wanted to throw it out there. Like I said, no one's here to answer that, I'm assuming, but I want to put that out.
Alderman Tebow, the problem is that Comcast owns all the infrastructure, so for someone else to come in and bid on a contract like that, they would have to buy out, they would have to provide all the infrastructure, and that's a big, big cost. That's why Comcast keeps getting the contract. Motion before us is for final passage. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 2261 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-22-062, establishing the use of fund balance for tax rate.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-22062, and like to speak to it briefly.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, we do this, try to do this every year, use part of the unexpended balance to pay down the tax rate. I don't know if it came up last night. We do have to be careful how much we apply towards that, because if we have an issue the following year on revenues, it would exacerbate the tax rate more than we wanted to. So $4 million is a good amount, and I've talked to John Griffin about this, and it seems to be the optimum that we can put towards this, so I recommend final passage.
Alderman Lopez.
I just want to comment that the, bringing the tax rate down particularly following the recent revaluation is important, because the recent revaluation, it was observed by several aldermen on this board that there's a risk of doing it when it was mandated essentially by the state or forced upon us, because there were so many open and undeveloped commercial properties that it looked like it was going to tilt the burden of taxes more on the private individual than on the commercial industries. And that's unfortunate, and we do have to address that, but I do think we also need to take into account the full landscape of our economy in the future rather than a laser focus on achieving a goal. And I can't say that that was the city's priority in any particular area, but I do know that some private individuals were very focused on just the one thing they wanted to accomplish, and it resulted in a lot of unintended consequences. So I'm glad that we're at least able to do this much. I think the situation is unfortunate in general.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate from the discussion last night, I know the mayor brought this up, but part of this is picking a delicate balance in how much we pay down to also make sure we keep our AAA bond rating, which does help us to borrow at a more favorable rate. So the relief is important. I know it's going to be a tough year for everybody, but we have to strike that balance to continue getting the AAA bond rating.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to support this. I voted for it, I endorsed it. I think that moving $4 million is good. File this under, I wish I knew then what I know now, as far as the timing. I did a little digging into it and looking at what more we could add to follow the law of the resolution. We essentially, you know, the math that I did, we could possibly move another 3.6 million into it to keep it at above the 10%. But speaking to Alderman Dowd, that was something that we didn't discuss last night. I wish I, again, knew then what I know now. I would have advocated for it. I think the short-term payoff to the Nashua taxpayer is something that we know now, and I would absolutely move to do that, at the sacrifice of perhaps losing a AAA bond rating for how much interest rates go up. We don't, we weren't really sure. We talked about it a little bit last night, we couldn't arrive at a figure. Knowing that we could help the Nashua taxpayer now by moving additional dollars in, for sure, but I'll endorse this tonight. I think it's a move in the right direction, but I think next year when we look at it, I'm definitely going to advocate for more.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I mean, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be for losing the AAA bond rating, but, I mean, when we talk about things that we could do to decrease the tax rate, is this our only valve? rate, is this our only valve? Is it only just taking money from this account and moving it and that's it? And there's no other things that we can do in the city to try to drive that, that tax rate down? You know, I mean, listening to Alderman Sullivan saying we have, we have, you know, a little over 3 million more that we could put in there is interesting, um, except I don't want to lose the, the bond rating. But I will support this, I just wish there was more that we could do because 4 million's not gonna be enough. I thought we were gonna have more, more to use towards driving that tax rate down.
Alderman Lopez?
Uh, I feel the need to observe that Alderman O'Brien's efforts in Concord do help with the tax rate because if our city budget isn't as big because costs aren't being passed down to Nashua, then we wouldn't have as much to drag down. So there are a lot of things we can do and there are a lot of things that we do do. And for people to look at only one solution and claim that that's progress seems like it's misleading to the public who really deserve to know all of the things that could be done.
Alderman Dowd?
Just to go on the record, um, I've been 11 years on the board and every year we said we add more money to bring down the tax rate, everybody has, would like to do that. But there are, are severe issues if we spend too much to spend down the tax, tax rate, especially in, in this vein, so, uh, this is an optimum.
Alderwoman Kelly?
I just wanted to point out that we've also done a lot and I was going to mention when we talked about Kim Kleiner, but she worked really hard on getting our health insurance costs down, um, over the last year and we've seen a lot of that come too. So I, we're all doing our part to bring it down wherever we can.
Motion before us is to recommend, I mean, is for final passage, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and Resolution 2262 is declared duly adopted.
Madam President, point of order? With this is with the tax rate, would this have been better with a roll call vote to make sure that we had the 10 members?
It didn't require it.
You know, I may be incorrect, but I just want to make sure while we're here, Madam President.
It doesn't require it.
Very good, thank you.
Unfinished business ordinances?
None.
New business resolutions?
First reading of R-22-064, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed 867,367 dollars to purchase a 2023 Pierce Aero XT Pumper Truck with associated equipment.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Camo, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Gueva, Alderman Karen, Alderman Tebow, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, the Board of Fire Commissioners, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing at 7:00 PM on Thursday, October 13th, 2022.
First reading of R-22-065, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $7,050,000 for various improvements in equipment at the Solid Waste Department or Hills landfill.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, the Board of Public Works, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing at 7:00 PM on Thursday, October 13th.
First reading of R-22-066, authorizing the mayor and the city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $16 million for building renovations at the Birch Hill and Main Dunceville Elementary Schools.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, Capital Improvements Committee, the Board of Education, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing at 7:00 PM on Thursday, October 13th, 2022.
First reading of R-22-067, authorizing the mayor and the city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $6,394,575 for the city's sewer infrastructure program and sewer structures.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Karen, Alderman Tebow, Alderwoman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I mean, yeah, given its first reading, I will assign that to the Board of Public Works. The Budget Review Committee, Board of Public Works, schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing at 7:00 PM on Thursday, October 13th.
First reading of R-22-068, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $2 million for school building safety improvements.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Moran, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Gueva, Alderman Karen, Alderman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, the Capital Improvements Committee, the Board of Education, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing at 7:00 PM on Thursday, October 13th, 2022. New business ordinances?
First reading of O-22-026, authorizing stop signs at the intersection of Blueberry Lane and Old Coach Road.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Camo, Alderman Dowd. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of O-22-027, updating the ordinances regarding taxi cab licenses.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Period for general public comment, we have three folks that have signed up, Matthew Guthro.
Good evening, Matthew Guthro, 104 Ponle. Tonight you, uh, you voted on first reading for more bonding for two elementary schools, which admittedly is necessary, bringing them up to code, and the city's lucky to have in conjunction of the federal ESSER funds to mitigate the HVAC costs because these projects have been continuously been bumped into a long-term deferred maintenance for years. With that said, I'd like to draw your attention to a pattern in Nashville with planning and spending habits with our school buildings. We make a plan for a building or a property, the resolution's endorser, Alderman Dowd, and the planning board pressure the JSSBC and the Board of Aldermen to make a rushed decision without public input that says that if we're gonna save us money. Then a few months later, the costs have escalated and the original estimate of the budget is scrapped. Some recent examples of this are the cost renovations like Franklin Street preschool building, that is costing much more than the previous estimate, and this building is still not in use for the 2022 school year. Another is 9 million in bonding beyond the original resolution for the budget of 81 million to the new middle school build. It's time to take a deeper look at the planning process for new builds and renovations. This process doesn't take into account general maintenance of the spaces that we already have and the general needs of the students and support and curriculum materials. With the rise of taxes and escalated costs in construction materials, we need to find better ways to approach these projects and move away from the old establishment politicians making deals. Another topic entirely, it's nice that we have in Nashua, um, to address our public health concerns like flu shots. But as a parent here in Nashua, I'm appalled to learn that a seven-year-old student at Birch Hill Elementary was vaccinated for influenza without parent consent last week. Since you control the purse strings of the Nashua Division of Public Health and Community Services, I demand that an investigation be made into this incident from the top down. Who holds the liability here? What would have happened if this child had an adverse reaction? Who's responsible for an error that cannot be undone? Therefore, I would like to respectfully request, before you bang the gavel to end tonight's meeting?
30 seconds.
That you recommend that the independent investigation and audit of the Nashua Division of Public Health and Community Services. We need to clearly determine that no minors receive medical treatment without parental consent here in Nashua and assurances can be made that the safety measures that should have been followed are going to be followed moving forward. Thank you.
Karen Bill?
First of all, um, I'd, I'd like to ask you, Donna, if it would be okay if you didn't, uh, interrupt with the reminders? I don't need the reminder, I have my own device here with my minutes on here and it kinda takes away from people listening, I feel. So, um, Karen Bill, 95 Parnell Place, Nashua, New Hampshire. Excuse me. August 18th, 1920, I know most of you weren't around, but the 19th Amendment granted women the right to vote, okay? Imagine that if every time I went to vote this year, I was met at the door demanding proof that women had the right to vote. Such archaic behavior would not be tolerated and probably holding back laughing because of the level of stupidity and disregard of the law. This would be in 2022. Here's another one that should make your blood boil. June 2nd, 1784, amended in 1976, the people of New Hampshire, Article 8 of our Constitution reinforcing the existence of a right of access to public meetings and records by adding that government therefore be open, accessible, accountable, and responsive. On September 15th, I sent an email to Director Kleiner asking for the Nashua property cards to be put back online, they were always there, and for some reason, recently, they've been taken away. So now if you want a property card, you have to come to City Hall and pay for it, 75 cents. So if I want to do an abatement and have some comps, I have to come to City Hall, stand in line, pay 75 cents per card that's not my own, use staff time, kind of ridiculous. The response I got back? None, no response. Earlier this year, she accused a member of the public of impersonating a City Hall employee. After a police investigation, it was found without merit, character assassination without any consequences. Today, I called to ask a question of City Hall, imagine my surprise when the person answered the phone on the first ring, was pleasant, answered my question politely, and we even shared a laugh. This is the example of, that all should follow as employees of City Hall. Bravo to Donna Graham for being a model of positivity and open communication in government. I've had positive interaction with John Griffin, providing information about the true cost of barriers, hey, that's what, that would have been a tax savings right there, along with the PAC being double budget. Thank God, because every, every single email I sent to Director Cummings was ignored until I wrote one that said, pursuant to the right to know law, and then I got five words of an answer back. It's commonplace, but I've, I've had my fill of people vilifying members of this community that come here, comment, send emails, and request information, including myself. And after the last fiasco with the Board of Aldermen meeting, when Alderman Cle was comparing someone in this room to an insurgent with an army of people who want to overthrow Nashua, crazy. I'm a law-abiding citizen, I pay my taxes on time, I think it's time that the employees and officials elected here step up and have to also obey those same laws.
Your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lori Orlano?
Lori Orlano, 41 Berkeley Street. Alder, Alderman Lopez, you made some comment tonight about this unfortunate reevaluation that we had to do that had unintended consequences. I don't know what you were referring to, because, what you were referring to because it was rather coded, but I think it had to do with the fact that some people addressed issues in the assessing office, namely me, in 2018, and it opened up this view to get a measure and list done. This was something that Attorney Bolton and Mayor Donches got behind because we hadn't done a measuring list in 30 years. And if you recall, when the measuring list came forward, I actually said, don't do it. I was opposed to that and spending that amount of money on a measuring list, not believing we'd get into that many homes and not believing we would resolve the issues, which were really more inter-office regarding staffing and process. I wanted to see that improved before we went on the outside. We got our new numbers from Vision, they did not provide any type of report for citizens like KRT did to inform us of what the general overall increase was, where the categories fell, we got nothing. We were then told that there was a shift between commercial and residential, there was no report done on that. I'd like to know what that shift is, because right now, the average home went up about 40%, tax rate's coming down about 20. That wasn't a 20% differential, there's other stuff going on there. We also had a concern with how depreciation was being applied, and we were gonna rework that in how we built condition on the home, we undertook that process. What was the result of that? We don't know. Was it effective? Was paying the 1.3 million effective in fixing that problem? We have no idea. I'd be the first one to advocate not to do it again if it didn't work. I don't want to see money wasted like that, just go back to an update for half a million dollars. So I think you're being very narrow-minded and you're uninformed about what we were really looking to do here and the fact that you as a board don't have any answers on what the outcome really is. You don't know. So, um, I also think that, um, I'm very concerned when I hear Director Cummings is taking over for Ms. Kleiner. I have a major concern with that because I view him as a major violator of open records laws. This guy is not good at that. And he runs his, uh, he runs wild, he does it his own way, um, you know, beg for forgiveness afterwards, I suppose, but this guy isn't a people person and I don't think he's a people person for inside here. I think you gotta start looking for people who are more aligned with what needs to be done for this city and have more skill level. And you didn't address what's gonna happen to economic development when he moves over, is he wearing all the hats? Maybe 13 departments for one person isn't the right thing, but I think that's a disaster pick. And I know that's gonna be a nightmare for people like me and other citizens, but I think it's gonna be a nightmare for people inside this city hall. Thank you.
Remarks by members of the board, I'll start over here tonight. Alderwoman Timmons?
I think we had a great choice with, um, Director Clemmons and I respect him and he will do a good job, other than that, I'm not gonna say anything because it wouldn't be right.
Alderman Tebow?
Thank you, Madam President, I do have a few things. Um, I, I just want to say thank you for the, for having some public comment, we've only had one person recently, so it's good to see. More people come out, no matter what they say, it's great. Um, and I want to step up for Alderman Lopez, very intelligent guy, no, no narrow mind there. So first thing is, I want to congratulate North High School on beating South 47 to nothing in the Battle of the Bridge game. I also want to, uh, I also want to congratulate South for winning the Battle of the Bridge overall, so despite losing that game, um, I'm a South person, I send my kids to South, um, two of them have graduated, one's still to go, but I've coached many kids on both teams and they're, you know, great kids in both schools, so I want to congratulate both of them. Something I heard that concerned me a little bit from DPW that we have possibly about 100 streetlights out in the city. I had one recently fixed, I helped, uh, Alderwoman Cle, or Alderman Cle, um, get one fixed in, in her area. And even when we were out there, uh, me, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dowd, at the Rocky Graziano Circle dedication, we looked up and we saw three that they're all, all was hanging out was wires. And so my concern is it's gonna start getting darker now, it is starting to get darker. Kids are gonna come home from school, it's 4 o'clock, 4:30, whatever, after-school stuff, and the lights in the city, there'll be some throughout the city that aren't gonna be lit, so, um, I don't know what the answer is there, it was hard to get one done, it took me a long time and I work at EverSource to try to get that one done, so, uh, if there's truly 99 more lights in the city, um, that's a concern for me because we'll have kids walking in the dark. And with the recent thing that went on in Mines Falls, we need all the lights in our city that we can, um, so I want to make sure that, that, I'm more than happy to help if, if there's any way I can help with DPW getting those done because I think that's a concern. And the last thing I wanted to mention is, um, at the, uh, and this may not be appropriate, but I'm gonna mention it anyway, it's nothing bad, um, it's actually something really good. Uh, our mayor, Jim Donches, on Saturday night at the Eleanor Roosevelt Dinner, got the Franklin D. Roosevelt Award, um, and it's a prestigious award and it, it's, what? No, it was at the Eleanor Roosevelt Dinner, but it was the Franklin Roosevelt Award. Uh, someone else won the Eleanor Roosevelt one, that was a female. Um, but it, what he won it for was his stints as mayor of the city and, and how the city has grown and how, uh, great the city has become over the last, you know, 20 to 30 years in his double stints as mayor. And, you know, we continue to get good bond ratings, we continue to make magazines' top 10 lists, and I think, you know, we get a lot of criticism in the city, but go to other cities, we have, I've said it a million times, we have a good city here, despite the issues we have, like any other growing city, we have a good city, we live in a great city and we have a good mayor, and I was very happy to, to be there. And I was very happy to be there to see him win that award. And it goes to everything he's done for the city. So thank you.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I want to wish Kim Kleiner the best in her new position. I know she'll do a good job. I worked alongside with her on several projects. And she always gave 100%. So I wish her the best. I hate to see her go. But you know what? Sometimes you have to move on to do better. The other thing is that two weeks ago, the Nashua Senior Center was invited to participate in the cultural festival at Gurley Park. It was the first time I've been there. It was great. We had a wonderful time. We met a lot of people. And the Board of Directors, members that were there, came up with some ideas for next year because of their musical groups and things that they had to try to bring them to our senior center and to be part of a couple of our major events that we run. And on that, Saturday is Monomotor Mania Day at the Senior Center from 1:00 to 4:00. So old people would really enjoy coming with their cars. We'll have about 50 cars there in the parking lot. And the Senior Center will be open. So any Alderman who has not had a tour, come on down. And we'll have food and some entertainment and what have you. So we're looking forward to participating along with The Telegraph this year. So thank you.
Alderman Gouvert.
Thank you, Madam President. I know we emailed back and forth earlier this week, but I want to wish Director Kleiner all the best in her future endeavors. And other than that, we had Wheels and Wings the other past week at the Nashua Airport. Over 3,000 people came. It was a great event. Congratulations to DPW and Parks and Rock for putting that on. It was awesome.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I just want to address that a member of the public spoke about the school projects. And it's quite a bit of misinformation that he had. And I would suggest he come to the meeting at 7:00 PM on Thursday, October 13th. Just a couple of things. Franklin Street, we had issues there because of supply chain. Two air handlers just arrived. Months late. The two outside stairs mandated by the city and state fire marshal were late coming in. The school was progressing along at a good pace. But it's an older building. There were a lot of construction issues. As far as the Main-Doswell-Birch Hill and the bonds, the reason for the expedited timing on that was driven by the state and the federal government because of the ESSR funds. All of that project has to be completed by 2024. There's a lot of work to be done. And the schedule was compressed severely. And that will all come out at that meeting. Also, as far as the security, there's not a lot of detail because it's security issues. And some of that will come out at that meeting as well. There's an excellent chance that that $2 million will never have to be bonded because there's state and federal funds supposedly coming to cover that. But as with any time we have state and federal funding, it's a slow boat to China to get here. But again, it's on a timing issue. And it's also a security issue. So we're moving ahead. And as far as the new school escalation of materials is a worldwide issue, we have managed it exceptionally well. We're looking at a school that's probably going to come in a little under $80 million total. And some of that was caused by all of the elements of the school going up in price, but we've managed it quite well. The same school being envisioned and conquered was priced out at $276 million. So I've had calls from the union leader. I have had calls from many cities in the city and the state of New Hampshire asking, "How are we getting this built at that low price?" So it's certainly not an exceptional high price. We have done exceptionally well with it. And again, the night of that meeting, you'll get more information.
Alderman Kamal.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I also wanted to congratulate South on winning the Battle of the Bridge. And the football game didn't go exactly the way I had hoped. But, you know, you win some, you lose some. They walked it off last year, not so much this year. But, you know, good competition on both sides. I also wanted to bring this up. I did receive a couple of emails and some phone calls. And I heard about it again tonight during public comment about the vaccination issue at one of the elementary schools. I do think this is something that should be looked into. First and foremost, I do support people that choose to get immunized. I think the flu shot's a good thing. And I'm glad that we have a lot of opportunities for people to do it and avenues to help people get it. But I am concerned about a number of things here, primarily the health and safety of the children. DPHCS doesn't have full medical histories on all these students. That's why they need consent forms to come back from the parents. So, I mean, they don't know things like whether there's an allergy situation. The child could have already been immunized. There could be religious objections. That's why consent is so important. Parents all know the risk factors for their children. DPHCS does not. Also, while it's not as important as the children's safety, I'm also concerned with the potential liability of the city, DPHCS, the Board of Education, and us here on the Board of Aldermen if someone's child was injured by this program. Since Director Bagley has acknowledged that the incident did in fact take place. And although it's unfortunate that we can't go back and fix it, I'm hoping that we can look forward now and come up with a process to ensure that it doesn't happen again. I encourage DPHCS to come up with a comprehensive plan to ensure a greater set of controls is put in place to make sure that we are absolutely certain beyond any doubt that nothing like this will be possible again. And I hope that they will update the Board of Ed and us here on the Board of Aldermen once that audit's been finalized and the plan's been developed.
Alderman Kelly.
I wanted to thank Director Kleiner for her service and wish her well in her new role. She's done a lot for the city. And I've personally worked with her on Pride and a bunch of other things. And she's been incredible. So I wish her well on that. I also was going to comment about the school building projects, but Alderman Dowd did a pretty good job. As a mom with a daughter who just finished at Main-Doswell, they've done a lot with what they've got. But they definitely have some infrastructure needs there. And I'm looking forward to seeing that happen as well as some security measures being put in place.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to take this opportunity to express my thanks to Kim Kleiner for her services in the city. I first met Kim when I was campaigning for Alderman at Large in 2007. And Kim grilled me like no one else about what my positions were, particularly on education. And ever since that day, we've been close. And she's... We share the same points of view. But she has done a tremendous amount of work for the city, both as a private citizen back then. And then when she got on the school board, helping our custodians, preventing them from being union busted by some of the members of the school board at the time, to then moving to City Hall and working closely here with the health insurance, as was mentioned, the savings there. And also little things, like the building, like the Court Street building. And some of the tenants and working with some of them behind the scenes has been challenging. And Kim's always been there to be that point of contact. She does a lot of different things. There's things that are public that we all see. But then there's a lot of stuff behind the scenes, too. So we are truly losing somebody who has really done a tremendous job for us. And, you know, while it will be sad to see her go, I do wish her luck in her new endeavors. And I'm glad that she'll still be around in this community to continue to lend her support to the causes that she and I both believe in. So I truly, truly will miss her in City Hall. But thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. So I've been away on vacation for a while. And a lot has happened. When I came back, when I was on vacation, I was... I didn't have cellphone service. And I had unreliable access to internet. So I wasn't really aware of a lot that was going on. But when I came back, I became aware that my constituents are... A lot of my constituents have written to me and called me about a proposal that's being heard by the Planning Board next Thursday night to build 44 townhouses at so-called Merritt Place at the Maplewood area. And that's an area that Alderman Sullivan slid over into my ward. You're welcome. And but, you know, I want people to understand that, you know, I was away. I couldn't respond. And that's why you haven't heard from me. But the meeting is coming, this coming Thursday. And I want people to understand that that... That the... That proposal is being made and is going to be heard by the Planning Board. It's not before the Board of Aldermen. The Board of Aldermen, many years ago, established that, you know, what's called a flexible... What's the U stand for?
What? Flexible Use Overlay District.
Flexible Use Overlay District. Which is, you know, there are only two or three of them in the city. But in this particular flexible F-U-O-D, F-U-O-D, that, you know, it allows... It was something that former Ward 5 Alderman, former Alderman at Large, former president of the Board of Aldermen, Brian McCarthy, had a big role. And also, former Alderman, former Planning Director Kathy Hirsch, and a lot of other people about the planning. And we heard comments about the necessity for long-range planning. This was, you know, a long-range plan for the South, a good part of the southwest quadrant of the city, which is located largely in Ward 5. And, you know, it was a proposal to allow for the development of that area to allow for residential use and also commercial use. And so that ordinance, you know, talks about what can be done there. And that ordinance, unlike other zoning ordinances, you know, the provisions of that ordinance, most other zoning ordinances, you can appeal to the zoning board of adjustment. In this flexible use overlay district, it's the Planning Board that hears appeals from the ordinance. And there are very specific criteria that are enumerated in that ordinance about to guide the Planning Board on whether or not they can, you know, allow, you know, variances in essence, or waivers, they're called in that ordinance, from the provisions of that ordinance. So to my Ward 5 constituents, if you object to the proposed use, your objection should be made to the Planning Board. And if you go to the Planning Board agenda, there are specific instructions there and time limitations on when you can send emails or letters to the Planning Board. You can also appear at the meeting, which will be held at the City Auditorium at 7:00 PM next Thursday. It's also available on Zoom. And there are instructions on how you can make your voices known in those various ways. So to my Ward 5 constituents, you know, it's... I'm not the one that's going to be deciding. And the Board of Aldermen is not going to be deciding whether this project can go forward or not. It's the Planning Board. And they have very specific criteria that they have to look at in making this decision. So I encourage you to look at the ordinance, look at the criteria. And if you feel that the proposal doesn't meet those criteria, let your voice known. Or on the other hand, if you're in favor of this project, you know, you can let them know that as well. There's also, that same night, there's another... The Planning Board is also hearing a proposal to build 10 single-family detached condominium units as part of a condominium conservation subdivision on Buck Meadow Road. And, you know, that has gone before the Conservation Commission. And the Conservation Commission has won some adjustments to the plan. But I encourage you to look at that. And if you want to say anything about that, it'll be also that Thursday night. And also, you know, I have to say, I said this when the cable TV contract came before the committee. I said it then. And I just want to make it clear to the public that, and I say this because I'm on the Cable TV Advisory Board. The contract that we have, the franchise that we have with Comcast, is not a monopoly. It is not, does not grant Comcast the exclusive right to provide cable TV services in Nashua. It allows them to provide cable TV in Nashua. Any other entity can also make a proposal to provide cable TV in Nashua. And they are entitled to the same benefits that this contract is giving Comcast. So Comcast doesn't have a monopoly. It just, as someone else pointed out, I think you, Madam President, pointed out, you know, Comcast, you know, has acquired over the years the infrastructure that is located. They've put up the wires to provide cable TV service to the city. Anyone else can do the same thing. And we're not... And we would encourage anyone else to compete with Comcast. We would love to see that. But we are not in a position to do much about that. We have to wait for someone to come forward. Now, I understand that Consolidated is providing... Is trying to compete in a way, but it's a different... They're not providing cable TV. It's through the internet that they're going to be providing services. But I just want to make it clear to people. You know, the contract, we did negotiate with Comcast. We did win some concessions from Comcast. You know, they are providing an additional public access channel, a high-definition channel. And they are providing monetary payments in addition to that. So there are various concessions that we did get. But it's very limited as to what we can do. It's largely controlled by federal law. You know, so... So any, you know, your constituent and other people out there, I know they're always complaining about Comcast. And I just want to make it clear that it's not an exclusive contract. But it's very, and we're very limited as to what we, you know, what we can do. We have nothing to do with what they charge in the services that they perform. You know, we can, you know, if you have complaints, we can hear the complaints. We do have a relationship with them. And we can, you know... We do have a relationship with them, and we can, you know, advocate to try to help people with that. But we haven't given them an exclusive right. It's not a monopoly. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, I'd like to, I probably should have said this in remarks to what the mayor was commenting on, but I'd like to congratulate Ms. Brown for her energy savings initiatives. I think Nashua has definitely led the way in a lot of different areas, in addition to us locking our rates down, which is nice. We've also looked at green energy and alternative energy sources, which saves taxpayers a lot of money, whether it's the CNG buses that are driving around, you know, running off of the natural gas that we extrude from our own landfills, or whether it's solar installations at our school offsetting costs, or the ongoing efforts to try to, of the Electric Aggregate Committee, to try to help Nashua turn its hydroelectric capabilities into being a utility provider. We look at a lot of different ways to save taxpayers' monies, and I think there's a danger in presenting to the public only one possible solution, only one mechanism, or, you know, demonizing people that are largely very effective at running a successful city by creating a straw man and saying, well, if they don't do this, then they're not, they're not good enough. I think we need to have a holistic approach if we're going to continue to be effective. I want to congratulate Ms. Kleiner on her future opportunities. She will be very much missed. I found her to be a very diligent, hardworking, and patient person. She, like many city employees, has taken a lot of very negative comment and pushback from individuals using public comment, which is a very difficult position for a non-elected employee to be in, where they're trying to do their job, but the public has an opinion on how they do their job, because it's a public job. And working in the public sector is not easy. She has shown a lot of leadership and a lot of innovation over very difficult times, which I appreciate. On the topic mentioned in public comment of character assassination, I recall myself that she didn't make comments accusing members of the public of things. I believe she read a statement by one of our vendors that was communicated to us to advise the Board of Aldermen of a concern. That's my recollection, at least. With regards to the comments that were directed at me, with regards to me speaking in code, my comments stand for themselves, and I think people can understand them pretty clearly. It was my understanding that there was a group of people that were pushing for the revaluation, and that was what the taxpayers wanted. For an individual to self-identify as a precipitant of that, the truth speaks to itself. If it does, other individuals in public comment, who are on record as repeatedly using profanity, came up and said in public comment that they believed it was intended, directed towards them, but they were baited into using it. So you don't always get people taking accountability for things. Sometimes you get people taking credit for things that they may not really deserve credit for. I don't know where code comes in with that. I think I have a right to express my opinions as Alderman, because I was elected as Alderman. And I think the public has, the public has a right to speak in public, and they are accountable for the things that they say in public. On a more personal and pressing note for me, I'm hearing more constituent concerns about people who are unsheltered, people who are homeless, more people who are presenting behavioral issues and dysregulation. It's getting colder out. People who are easy to ignore in our daily lives, who are struggling nightly, and, you know, we've had a tremendous amount of rain these last couple of days, imagine having nowhere to stay. We don't have programs to meet everybody's needs in Nashua. We have a fantastic organization, organization with Nashua Soup Kitchen and Shelters that does their best to meet the needs of the populations that their mission supports, but there is a large number of people who are struggling with substance misuse and mental health issues, who regardless of what their personal challenges are, end up homeless, end up unsheltered. Our city is not meeting those needs. And our citizens see that happening, and they don't know what to do. So I think it is a good reminder, as always, to support the organizations doing the work. Support Revive, they're working on recovery efforts, a peer-based recovery program. Support Rise Above, support the Soup Kitchen. Support Stepping Stones, which is working to help youth homelessness be addressed and help kids who are unsheltered. Support the new initiatives that are coming place, coming forward to provide low-income housing and workforce housing. The people of Nashua see things that are happening around them, and they feel like they're not equipped to do it. But often, I can say, working in nonprofits and directly with those populations, the support and the resources and the supplies that leads to success come from individuals. So as it gets colder and we all start to think about holidays and Thanksgiving and our own personal gratitude for the different privileges that we have, don't for a second doubt your ability to extend that to others. And I think it's important to remember at this particular time of the year, as the nights do get longer and the days do get colder. Thank you.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. One, I would just like to express my best wishes to Director Kleiner. I met her several years ago when I ran the Safe Station Program, and I have always found her to be very engaged, very intelligent, very, very strong advocate for people with mental health and substance use disorder. And it's very hard around City Hall to find anyone who has a negative thing to say about her. So I do wish her the best of luck on our endeavors. And kudos to the city employees that keep on saving us money and the taxpayers' money. It's great to hear that about the tax rate, I'm sorry, the utility rate coming down for a lot of our accounts. Let's see, I didn't write a list down, so I'm trying to remember. To my Jewish brothers and sisters, I'd like to wish you all a happy Yom Kippur. I believe that ends tonight, and then next, no, Rosh Hashanah is today, ends tonight. Yom Kippur is next week. So I want to wish them all a great celebration of their holidays. Oh, the Egyptian Festival was a couple weeks ago. I could not make it to the Cultural Connections Fair at Greeley, or the Touch a Truck. A lot of things going on that Saturday. But the Egyptian Festival is wonderful. My kids enjoyed it, great food, a lot of activities for everyone. And it's great to expose my children to different cultures around the city, and I'm glad that Nashua has so many diverse opportunities to do that. It's just wonderful. And I think that's all I have.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. Best wishes to Director Kleiner. I had the opportunity to meet her. We met, was president of Nashua West Rotary. She came in while I was president there, so we did get to meet, and she was a great member, and she'll be missed for sure. Tonight, we heard first readings of some bonding that's going to be coming towards the city. And I myself will be scrutinizing each and every project. I will be, because interest rates, regardless of credit score, bond rating, have gone up, and it all adds up. And it falls on the backs of Nashua taxpayers. I think it's important that you ask four key questions. Why this project? Why now? Who benefits? And a question I often ask of legislation that comes before this body, what happens if we do nothing? The cost of inaction. So those are questions that I'm going to be asking of each and every project that we bond. Because what we borrowed money for even six months ago is not what we're borrowing money for now. Because there's a lot of people around the kitchen table in Nashua tonight that have to make hard decisions, and sometimes have to push off what they want to do but can't until a further date. So I would just make sure that we scrutinize each and every project as it comes before us. I'm happy to see that we now have some time to vet these projects and to ask these questions. I'll be asking the questions, and I would ask all of my colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I too would like to offer Director Kleiner my best wishes in her future endeavors. Did work with her in several projects and within the city, and she's done a phenomenal job. Unfortunately, when you work for the city, and I'm talking even from my 35 years of experience being on the fire department, and remember one particular incident, a guy across the street nearly cut his arm off. Do you think he ever came over to the station and thanked us for saving his arm? It just doesn't happen, but you hold no malice. But what we fortunately have in this city are dedicated people, and Kim Kleiner was one. So again, wish her the best of luck. Alderman Timmons, I'm so glad you mentioned the Arlington Street project. Many years they spent in that fire station next door, and, you know, was vacant for a while, and now look at it, positive situation for the community and the city at large. So again, that she has left her footprint. And then I would also like to wish Director Tim Cummings best of luck into his new position. To me, it proves that the mayor seems to make some wise choices, as we hear in Patriots' football, next man up. And in this situation, it looks like we have the depth on our team of somebody that could come in and seem to do well. So, you know, I wish him, again, the best. And Mr. Mayor, I'm so glad you mentioned Doria Brown. As you know, when I was up at Conca, not being fiscally conservative or anything else, but I worked with the projects of the two dams that we're very fortunate to have in Nashua, and worked with Doria Brown, as you remember, in the Ned Metering Project, and cut that through, which was extremely difficult at that particular time. And, you know, I kind of wish every single one of you Aldermen would join me up at the State House. You know, I know several of you have done it. I see Alderman Karen turn away. Yes, she did do it, Alderman Moran, Alderman Clay, and even yourself, Madam President. Because it is extremely important, and to Alderman Gadeva, in your current, excuse me, but in your current position, you understand what is happening up there. And for a hundred dollar a year pay, in 1969, I was making more money annually collecting and delivering the Boston Globe. You know, if the taxpayers of the city don't want to elect me again, I'll go out and get the paper route again, you know, to make up the hundred dollar loss. But why do you do it? And I could tell you why you do it, because you are concerned with the city. To me, why every single Alderman should perhaps maybe consider becoming a state rep, to me, is very important. How does one hand know what the other hand up at the state level is doing? And there's a lot of things. There's a lot of bills. Check my voting record. I'm proud of it. Look at my percentile on voting. I'm proud of it. Even with my medical condition, extremely proud of it. My attendance has been good. But look at the issues. Yes, a lot of us, and I'm very proud of the 27 other members of our delegation and working. They have tried to stem the tide, but when you're in the minority party, you don't always get what you want. And even like tried to save the $2 million in the pension issue. So what do you do? You pick yourself up, you dust your clothes off, and you go in back into the arena and you fight again for another day. And I will do that up in Conca. And my wife thinks I'm a fool, you know, for doing it. But to me, you just don't spend, as I did, 35 years of protection to the city of Nashua, and walk away and not care. And I do care. To me, this is my city. My kids went to school here. They're all eating with the correct knife and fork. We are blessed, you know, got a roof over the head. So it's well worth my personal investment into this, and well worth the time. And I would like to invite all my constituents up for lunch, but keep in mind, it's a hundred dollars a year. Bring a brown bag. So we'll leave it at that. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. I too would like to offer my best to Director Kleiner. She has been a good, an excellent employee for the city. She's, she's, she's brought a lot of talent here, and I think, I think she'll be missed. I also want to address what Alderman Camo had to say to you, Mayor, in hopes that we would not have a child in our city that gets vaccinated without consent. So I'm concerned about that, too. Thank you. Committee announcements.
Madam President, there is an investigation.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Committee announcements? Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. So next month, we've had an additional PEDC meeting. We have a lot going on. So October 12th, we're going to actually have Director Sullivan, the planning, the new planning manager, Samuel Durfee, Chief Buxton, Andora Zdexikni, maybe the Fire Marshal, will be there to talk about rezoning up on Amherst Street. They're going to make a presentation to PEDC and get direction on where we want to go, and potentially adding some residential overlay to some existing commercial properties around Building 19. And then the following day, the following meeting will be on, sorry, October 18th, to further the conversation about outdoor dining fees for businesses. And I hope everyone can come to both meetings. Thank you.
Alderman O'Brien, did you have a committee announcement?
Yes, just to make everyone aware, you have this month off as far as infrastructure. There is a bill that did come through on this reading, but needs to be investigated by traffic. So therefore, enjoy your time off, and we'll see you next month.
Other committee announcements?
Yeah.
Alderman Lopez.
I'm like trying to make sure I get the right date here. Our next Human Affairs Committee in October, we're supposed to be getting, I believe, a public hearing and a presentation on some upcoming home funds allocations. So public may want to be aware of that. The Urban Planning Department is planning on putting out an announcement to collect input on that, too. And that is funding that specifically should be going towards populations that may be dealing with homelessness, such as people experiencing domestic violence, substance use, et cetera.
Thank you. Anyone else? Committee announcements? Okay. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the September 27, 2022, meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and we are adjourned at 8:56 PM. Thank you, everyone.